Okay, it's officially 2:05. And those that missed that last announcement, I had to wait until we started officially at 2:05 because there, we had a cancellation that started at 2:00. So, good afternoon, welcome everyone. I'm Chair Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative of the 6th District, and Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. We are here this afternoon for the following bills: 21-0098, 21-0111, 21-0116, and 21-0083. And just happy to have a colleague, Councilman James Torrance, here physically with me in council chambers. We yearn for the day when we're all in council chambers together. Okay, in attendance, we have members of the committee, John Bullock of the 9th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mark Conway of the 4th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I am here.
And Antonio Glover of the 13th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Odette Ramos of the 14th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Robert Stokes, do I see Robert with us yet? Oh, there you are, up top. Hello there, Mr. Robert Stokes, Councilman Stokes of the 12th District. And we also have Councilwoman Porter of the 10th District, and I also mentioned Councilman James Torrance of the 7th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I'm checking just to see if there's any other visiting council members. Seeing none, moving on to members of the Office of the President. We have Nikki Thompson, Director of Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Lucy Font, Staff Assistant for Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Matt Stagman, Director of Fiscal and Legislative Analyst.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representing the Office of the Mayor, I see Nina Themelis, Deputy Director of Governmental Relations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Moving right along, before we begin, I would like to remind you that if you are not speaking, please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized. When recognized, please identify yourself in the agency or organization that you represent. Once you have finished speaking, please put yourself back on mute. Let's begin. Our first bill, number 21-0098, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to five dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 1100 West Lafayette Avenue for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to five dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 1100 West Lafayette Avenue, block 0079, lot 001. This bill was introduced on June 14th, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember Bullock, would you like to comment about the bill?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is another project in our district that's been vacant for a number of years. And you know, as we know, regardless of the size of these buildings, they often go back to this process. And so this is a significantly large building, it's been vacant for a number of years, and thankfully, it has much community support, which is why you're looking at the five units that are there. So, the applicant's been in contact with us, has a good relationship with the community, so really looking forward to your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does the committee have any comments or questions? Moving on, the committee will now hear from agency representatives, and we'll start with the city solicitor.
Madam Chair, this is Hillary Rulie. On behalf of the Law Department, we would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. The Planning Commission, and please explain planning's findings.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, can you hear me? I was having audio issues earlier.
Uh, yes, we can hear.
Okay, terrific.
If you could get a little bit louder, that would be great.
Yeah, first, I had to do the call-in option for, I had issues with my computer, apologies. Afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee, this is Matt DeSantis from the Baltimore City Planning Department. This bill was heard by the Planning Commission at their August 26th, 2021 hearing. The planning staff recommended amendment and approval of the bill. The Planning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation and recommended amendment and approval of the bill. The specific amendment that was recommended by staff is the deletion of Section 2 of the bill, which authorizes the variance. The reason for that amendment was because after the time of the bill being first introduced, the applicant made a revision to their floor plans, which therefore eliminated the need for the one specific variance that was first included in the bill. So, the applicant's plans, as now, it still includes five dwelling units, but it's been reformulated inside the building, so there's no longer a need for the variance that was included in the first reader. And I am happy to go through the findings of facts as approved by the Commission. Let's see. So, the Commission found that the establishment, location, construction, maintenance, and operation of a multifamily dwelling at 1100 West Lafayette would not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or welfare. Proposed use is not precluded by any other law, including any urban renewal plan. Use of the property for multifamily dwelling is not otherwise in any way contrary to the public interest. Authorization would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code. Commission then found the additional considerations, that the site, including its size and shape, is appropriate for the proposed use. There would be no change in traffic patterns if this use were authorized. The surrounding area is one in which the permanent residential type was originally single-family owner occupancy, row housing, but some conversions of single-family to multifamily dwellings occurred during the 20th century. For this reason, it's unlikely that the proposed multifamily use would impair present or future development. There is a reasonable proximity of other dwellings, churches and other places of worship, schools, public structures, and places of public gathering. There is adequate accessibility for emergency vehicles, and of light and air to the premises and to other premises in the vicinity. There are adequate utilities, roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities. The proposed use of the existing structure would not affect preservation of cultural and historic landmarks and structures. Approval of the proposed use as a multifamily dwelling would not affect the existing character of the neighborhood, as noted above. While consistent with provisions of the city's comprehensive master plan, the proposed use is not prevented or limited by any urban renewal plan. Multifamily use would meet all applicable standards and the requirements of the zoning code upon granting variances, well, which again, which is no longer needed, and would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning code. Additionally, the Planning Commission adopted the following equity considerations for this bill. The property is located within a part of Baltimore City that has a low real estate market values and a proportion of non-white residents that is above citywide average. The San-Tan-Winchester and Harlem Park communities, as part of the larger West Baltimore area, have suffered from significant net disinvestment, combined with population losses for several decades. While there will be no apparent or predictable changes to the quality of life in the San-Tan-Winchester community that would result from disapproval of the proposed action, there is a predictable, though limited, improvement that could result from the completion of renovation and reuse of the property reinforced by creation of additional housing options for residents. By itself, the proposed action would not change the existing patterns of inequity that persists in Baltimore. However, if the proposed action would be accompanied by other similar actions generating both investment and reactivation of significant parts of West Baltimore, it could be part of a beginning to counteract patterns of inequity. There would be no effect on internal operations, department of planning, that would result in approval of this proposed action. That concludes the Commission's findings, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. As I'm able to, I will note, I am filling in for the much esteemed Martin French, who has a conflict this afternoon, but again, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Okay, and I understand that your findings are written in your agency's report, which has been shared with committee members. The committee has heard testimony regarding this bill. Is there any discussion about the findings before we move on with other agencies? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. A representative from the BMCA is not available this afternoon, but they do defer to the report from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nina. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison with the Department of Housing and Community Development. As the sponsor mentioned, the property is currently subject to a vacant building notice, and approval of the proposed use as a multifamily dwelling, and the subsequent renovation and reuse of the property could create additional housing options for residents and prompt further reactivation of West Baltimore. Therefore, thereby, we stand by our report. We do not object to the passage of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. The Fire Department.
Madam Chair, Derek Lamont Reddy, Fire Marshal. We stand by our report, which is no rejections, no objections.
Thank you. The Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. This is Brett Thorne with the Parking Authority. We have reviewed the legislation, and the Parking Authority does not oppose passage of the bill.
Thank you. And the Baltimore Development Corporation. Raven Thompson, oh, there you are.
Sorry. Raven Thompson, BDC. We stand by our report, no objection.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions?
Chair, I just have a quick question.
Councilwoman Ramos, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee, and thank you to the sponsor for bringing this to us. I was just looking at the property on CodeMap. It looks like they're gonna, are they gonna need something about the encroachment on the sidewalk? It's not shown on the plat, it's just shown on CodeMap. And this, I guess, is to the Planning Department? Or maybe this is inaccurate, what's happening on CodeMap?
Matt DeSantis, can you answer that?
Yeah, I'm pulling up CodeMap, just so that I can be looking at the same thing. But as I point myself, I would, I would imagine that the existence of that existing encroachment probably wouldn't have any impact on the proposed change in use. I don't believe that there are, I believe all of the proposed modifications to the building are interior. I don't think there's any, there aren't any exterior additions that are proposed. I don't know if possibly there is an existing minor privilege, or if DOT would be pursuing a minor privilege. But I would imagine this would be viewed as, given the age of the neighborhood and the building, a presumably illegally existing non-conformity. But I don't believe the proposed conversion would have, in any way, sort of expand that non-conformity or encroachment.
Yeah, it looks like from the street view, it's actually the windows, the bay windows that are kind of sticking out there. It's a beautiful building, I'm really excited it'll be put to good use. I was just curious about that, and I guess it would be handled in another way when they get to the renovations and the permitting, because you're right, it wouldn't have anything to do with the use. Thank you, Madam Chair, that was it.
Any other council members at this time, and then we'll move on to take public testimony? Hearing none. Okay, computer users, please use the raise hand function if you wish to testify. When called upon, please state your name. Attendees who call in by telephone will be unmuted one by one. Callers will hear two beeps when unmuted. If you do not wish to testify, please say so. If you do wish to testify, please state your name. And we're now going to check to see if there's any raised hand functions. And there are none, and now we are checking for callers. And since we do have several callers, we're going to go through the list to see if any are with this particular bill. You're unmuted, user 2.
Howard Fokes, no comment.
No comment, thank you. User 3.
No comment.
Thank you. User 5.
No comment.
Thank you.
Failio.
Failio.
Hello.
Oh, okay. Frank Murphy, any comment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. No response. Rodney Walker.
No comment.
Thank you. Scott Weaver.
No comment.
Thank you.
And William Herman is the last one.
No comment.
Thank you. Okay, so for the record, there was no public testimony for this bill. Testimony has been taken that addresses the legal standards for the findings, and there are amendments to consider for this bill. Is there a motion to move the amendments?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Okay, based on the testimony and findings, there is a motion to move, is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
Do we need to move the finding of the facts?
Hillary, did you want to comment?
I can comment if the committee wants clarification. Essentially, it's generally been the practice of land use committees in the past to move findings of fact in the committee process, but technically, under the city council rules, the only thing a committee does is report on a bill favorable, unfavorable, favorable with amendment, or no report. And so anything else the committee does, it's certainly free to do, but it isn't required to do. And with land use findings of fact, they're actually adopted by the full committee on second or third reader. So while you can do that in the committee, you don't necessarily have to do it. Many bodies sort of compile all the factual information and put the findings of fact on people's, you know, before the full body later. And we do that as well. That is the necessary step, it's usually done on second reader. So that's the part that's legally required. If you wish to do it in committee, you certainly can. I know prior council members had done that, like Ed Riesinger, but you don't have to.
So, for the committee, for, just for clarification, that was something that was basically decided by, as she mentioned, the last chair. And so I feel that since we have taken tests, we continue to take testimony, as you hear, the findings have been addressed, and I try to reiterate that, for planning to continue to address that in the agency report. So, that's, you know, it addresses the legal standard, and that's what we are interested in. And so I feel we don't have to continue to vote separately on the findings, and that is, seems to have been backed up by Hillary Rulie. So, any more questions about that findings, can we move on? Councilwoman Bullock moved to, he made the first motion to move the bill, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramos. The bill is moving favorable with amendments. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilwoman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilmember Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilmember Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. And just quickly, I know Councilmember Dorsey is loving that, because he wanted to kind of shorten that process anyway. Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilmember Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilmember Stokes? Councilmember Stokes going once. Councilmember Stokes going twice. Let me just check and see, because he wasn't on. Hold on a second. Okay, absent for Councilmember Stokes. And this bill will move to second reader. Next bill, bill number 21-0111, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, variance 2312 Utah Place, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R7 zoning district on the property known as 2312 Utah Place, block 3424, lot 027, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, and granting a variance from certain bulk regulations, lot area size. The bill was introduced on July 19th, 2021. The sponsor of the bill, Councilmember Torrance, and Councilmember Torrance has stepped out for a second, so he'll probably want to comment when he returns. But we'll go ahead and move forward with the agency reports at this time, and we'll start with the city solicitor's office.
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Hillary Rulie again, from the Law Department. We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency, and also concur with the Planning Department recommendation that the variance is not needed.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the Planning Department, and again, please explain planning's findings.
Stephanie, Madam Chair, again, this is Matt DeSantis with the Baltimore City Planning Department. This bill was heard by the Planning Commission at their August 5th, 2021 meeting. Staff recommended amendment and approval of the bill. As Ms. Rulie mentioned, the amendment deals with a variance provision that is actually not needed. The Planning Commission, yes, so the Planning Commission concurred with planning staff recommendation to delete the variance of bulk regulations from this bill. The Commission adopted the findings of fact and equity findings, and recommended favorably nine members in the present, nine voting in favor. Regarding the findings of fact, let's scroll through here, and I will give an overview of the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission as listed in the staff report. So regarding the approval standards as listed in the zoning code, the establishment, location, maintenance, and operation of this property as a multifamily dwelling containing three dwelling units would not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or welfare, noting that its previous use from before 1950 to 2010 as a multifamily structure. Similarly.
You don't have to read the whole report, you can just give the main points, because I'm sure that the committee has read the bill and the report, so just give the main briefings. Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair. So, the proposed use would not be precluded by any other law, including any URP's. Authorization would not be contrary to public interest, and it would be in harmony and purpose, harmony would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code. And then moving on to the required considerations as listed in the zoning code. So, the site, the size and shape of the site is appropriate for the proposed use, there would not be any change in traffic patterns. The surrounding area is one in which the prominent residential type is single occupancy, row homes, but many conversions have taken place during the last century. It's unlikely that proposed multifamily use would impair present or future development. There is reasonable proximity of other dwellings, churches, et cetera. There's adequate accessibility for emergency vehicles, light air. There are adequate utilities, roads, drainage to the site. The proposed use of the structure would not affect preservation of cultural or historic landmarks. The proposed use as a multifamily dwelling would not affect the existing character of the neighborhood. It is consistent with provisions of the city's comprehensive master plan. There's no prohibition against the proposed use by any urban renewal plan, and the proposed use would meet all applicable standards and requirements of the zoning code without the need for any variances, hence the recommended deletion of the variance included. Regarding equity considerations, the property is located within a part of the city with stable real estate market values. The reservoir health community in the past suffered from significant net disinvestment for several decades. However, over the past few decades, the neighborhood and market has rebounded substantially. While there would be no apparent or predictable changes to the quality of life in the reservoir health community that would result in the disapproval of this proposed action, there is a predictable, though limited, improvement that could result from the completion of renovation and reuse of the property reinforced by the creation of additional housing options for residents. So by itself, the proposed action would not change the existing patterns of inequity that persists in the city. However, this could be part of a larger trend, generating both investment and reactivation of significant parts of Baltimore. and reactivation of significant parts of Baltimore. And yes, so again, covering this bill for Mr. French, but I'm still, I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee might ask. Thanks.
Thank you. You're doing a great job and I understand that your findings are also written in your agency's report, which has been shared with committee members. And we're going to pause a minute. Councilman Torrance is back and he has, he would like to make some comments on this bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for honoring my personal privilege. It is great to be here, actually in chamber for the first time as a council member in the 70th year of City Council. I'm honored to present this bill on behalf of Dr. Marilyn Francis Walker, who will be doing a three-unit conversion. That conversion will be also her primary residence, where she'll offer housing to families within the community. I'm thankful for her investment and her forward thinking to make sure affordable housing is available in Reservoir Hill. And with that, I yield back to the chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any discussions about the findings at this point with committee members? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Thumbless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMCA stands by its report and defers to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nina. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. And the Fire Department.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Derek Reddy, Fire Marshal. We stand by our report, which, which is no objections.
Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Chair, the M D, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation.
Raven Thompson, B D C. We stand by our report, no objection.
And the Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Christmas Age from the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our report, which is no, no objection.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions? Okay, we'll move on to public testimony and I think we have one. Dr. Marilyn Walker, which is the owner.
Yes. Hello. Good afternoon.
Hello. How are you?
I am fine, thank you. Just grateful that this have gotten to this point and I have nothing else to say. Just grateful.
All right. Any, oops, hold on. Okay, we're now going to go through the callers.
Well, as one along.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
No comment.
Thank you. Any, that's a private conversation. Next. I guess that's a no comment. Next.
Chair, Frank and Scott are here for DOT for 21-.
Bill, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Liam. We'll go ahead and elevate Frank since he's part of the last bill. Is that it with the callers on this bill? M? The letter M, did you want to testify on this bill, 21-0111? Rodney Walker, you're next.
I think it would be a great addition.
Thank you. That's your only comment?
I support it 100%.
Okay. Appreciate your testimony. Scott Weaver?
No comment.
Thank you. And William Hearn?
Hi, Madam Chair. I have no comment on this bill. I would just would like to state I am present at this meeting in order to comment and question on 21-0087, which was canceled, and the nature of that cancellation. So I apologize if this is not the correct venue for that, but that's, that's why I'm here.
Thank. The ads were not met on that bill. That's the only reason, the only reason that cancellation, the ads were not met for, you know, public notice.
Exactly why I was here was just to say that they were not posted. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay, I think that's it with the callers. Okay, testimony has been taken that addresses the legal standards for the findings and yes, there are amendments to consider for this bill as a motion to move the amendments.
Move the amendments.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Moving on, based on the testimony and findings, is there a motion to move the bill?
Move the bill.
Second.
Moved by Ramos and second by, was that Conway?
Conway, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilman Stokes? Absent. I think the councilman is having problems with his. Okay, the next bill, 21-0116, rezoning block 3518A, lot 001, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as block 3518A, lot 001, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque from the TOD 2 zoning district to the IMU 2 zoning district. This bill was introduced on August 16th, 2021 and the bill was sponsored by Councilman Torrance. Councilman Torrance, would you like to comment about the bill?
Yes, ma'am. Again, this is a zoning bill for the Woodbury community. Woodbury Community Association supports attracting tenants and maker spaces, commercial uses, as well as light industrial uses are compatible with the existing office, restaurant and studio spaces. So with that, I yield back to the chair.
Thank you. Do committee members have any questions to Councilman Torrance?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Councilmember Torrance, what is it that can't be done in TOD 2 that can be done in IMU that makes a difference here?
So Councilman Dorsey, there, are you creating maker spaces? They no longer want to do it for residential purposes, so this will be removed, the residential purposes from it because of the flood zone. So it would, this is done is because the, I believe they were the rock and bar courts and the gym there is now a vacant tenant. So they're trying to create more alpha spaces of that unit and somewhere have the industrial purposes.
And so what, so they can't get use or building permits to do those kinds of things in a TOD, but, okay. Thank you.
And I'm sure when we get to the Planning Commission, they can probably explain a little deeper. And we'll now hear from the agencies and we'll start with the city solicitor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Lina Di Pietro for the City Law Department. The Law Department approves the bill for form and legal.
Something just happened. Oh, there we are. Sorry. The Planning Commission, please explain the planning's findings as you're explaining.
Afternoon, Madam Chair. Again, this is Matt Sanus with Baltimore City Plan Department. This bill was heard by the Planning Commission at their September 16th, 2021 meeting. Just to summarize the, the resolution from the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommends favorably on adoption of the bill, finding that a mistake was made during, during the comprehensive rezoning that the property that, which is currently zoned TOD 2 should have been rezoned IMU 2 previously and that it's failing, and so its current zoning designation was, represents a mistake. The Planning Commission adopted the Planning Department's recommended findings of fact. They made, the Planning Department, the Planning Department's recommendation was, was that a substantial change in character has taken place. As Councilman Torrance mentioned, the, the property is within the, the flood zone and that, the, the, the most recent flood maps, I believe, increased the degree to which this property, which is the, known as the Meadow Mill, it increased it, the degree to which it's in a flood zone. So staff's, staff's recommendation was to adopt the finding that, that the new flood mapping represents a substantial change in character of the neighborhood. Again, the Planning Commission concurred with, with the findings, but came to a slightly different conclusion that the, that this was a mistake in zoning, in zoning. So to go quickly through the, the findings of fact, just scroll through Martin's report. So pursuant to the Maryland Land Use Code, the extent, to the extent that the rezoning of the property would encourage the reuse and continued use in ways which is more consistent with both the original construction of the buildings, as old Mill Valley buildings, and new, and new restrictions related to, to the redefinition and remapping of the flood elevations, the proposed rezoning would support the comprehensive master plan goals of retaining and attracting businesses fitting the mixed commercial industrial categories of the IMU 2 zoning districts regarding the needs of the city. This rezoning, the rezoning of this property supports its potential and continuing reuse in a manner more consistent with traditional uses. Regarding the needs of the neighborhood, the, as the fundamental effect of the proposed rezoning would remove the potential use or reuse of residential purposes, it would, it would be protective of future Baltimore City residents by removing options to, to redevelop a property in the regulated flood plain of the Jones Falls housing while encouraging its continued use as a locus of employment. Moving on to the required findings, additional required findings, population changes, there has not been significant population change in the area since June 5th, 2017. There are adequate public facilities available to, in the area where the property is located. There are no changes anticipated in present or future transportation patterns. Uses, the uses that would be authorized by this, by a rezoning of IMU 2 would be generally compatible with historic use of the property and with nearby non-residential uses. The changing, changing the, the zoning of the property would make it part of the continuous chain of industrial mixed use and industrial zoning. That's been applied to the Jones Falls Valley floor from the city limits all the way down to Howard Street. Additional required findings or considerations. The Jones Falls Valley, again, has, has historically been, been used for industrial purposes, so the, the proposed rezoning is consistent. The upstream and downstream of the property, the Jones Falls Valley properties are currently zoned, either a mixture of IMU or I1 or I2, while properties on the upper slopes of the valley, both in Hendon and in Woodbury, are largely zoned for residential uses. The suitability of the property, the question under, for uses permitted under its existing zoning, the, the property suitable for non-residential uses permitted under its existing classification, it's not equally suitable for, for residential uses permitted, again, because flood concerns the trend of development. There have not been any major changes in land use in this general area since 2017. The area is fully developed with the exception of a few pockets of underutilized land and flood plain regulations restrict development in a way that combined with the natural topography of the Jones Falls Valley makes assembly of properties for a larger or more, or major redevelopment a distant possibility. The Planning Commission also adopted the following equity considerations. The subject property is within a part of Baltimore City that has relatively stable mid-range real estate values and, and a proportion of non-white residents that is lower than the citywide average. There may be changes to implement prospects of minority group members that would result from, from the proposed action as a result of allowing a greater diversity of commercial industrial uses that are allowed by the current zoning. The community groups associated with Hendon, Brookhill and Woodbury have a longstanding record of activism when land use matters relating to their communities have, have been placed in public forum and the approval of the proposed action would not affect resources or operations of the Planning Department. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee might have.
Thank you. I also want to make it a matter of record and support. There has, there is a support letter on file from the Woodbury community and also understanding that the findings are written in your agency's report, which has been shared with committee members. Is there any discussion about the findings of this bill at this point?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Stokes.
I sent you a text to let you know I'm voting yes, but you look at your phone, so you probably won't have to go back and, I just had some internet problems, I don't know what happened. So I'm back on, just want to let you know.
So do we have to go over these, go back? Hillary, do we have to go back verbally on all this or can we include? So we can, I think we can go ahead and include Councilman Stokes as a yes on the two previous bills. Elena?
I don't think Hillary's on anymore. Listen, can you repeat the question?
Do we have to go over the two previous bills and vote again or can we add Councilman Stokes was having technical difficulties and he is?
I believe you have to go back and do a motion to reconsider and act that way. I know, but we had to do this in the, in previous hearing this, this morning, so.
Okay. So we're gonna, Councilman Stokes, I'm gonna finish up this bill and then we'll go back on the other two. Okay?
Thank you.
No problem. Okay. Do any of the committee members have any further questions on this bill before we take testimony? Hearing none? Oh, let me go down, finish the board first, I mean, the agencies. Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Thumbless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relation. The BMCA stands by its report and defer into the report of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Baltimore City DOT, this is Liam Davis. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Fire Department did not receive any information on this bill.
Okay, that's why we don't have a board. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock with Baltimore City DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to.
report. We do not object to the passage of this legislation.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation.
Raven Thompson, BDC. We stand by our report in favor.
Thank you. Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Chris Missage with the Baltimore City Parking Authority. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. The committee will now take public testimony, checking to see if there's any raised hands. Seeing none. And now we're going to check for callers. Caller three, are you testifying?
Madam Chair, this is Al Berry. We are working and also on have the ability with the owners. Sam Himmelrich is on the phone, I believe, or can be on the phone if there are any questions. But we appreciate the support of the city in this. As was mentioned by Councilman Torrance, there was a large industrial building that was previously a sports facility that went out of business. And it's an industrial building. It doesn't lend itself to anything but industrial uses, which was the reason behind the bill. And certainly, the planning department and the new flood zone, which prohibits residential, which TOD does not, was another reason to request the IMU2 classification, which is a new classification for the city transform. Unless there are any questions, we appreciate the committee's support.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, user five.
No comment.
Thank you. He's not on this one. M, are you on this? Are you wanting to testify on this bill? The letter M. Hearing, no response. Moving to the next. Scott Weaver.
No comment.
Thank you. And William Hearn.
No comment, but I'm chair.
Thank, thank you. Okay, testimony. Testimony has been taken that addresses the legal standards for the findings. Based on the testimony and findings, is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved Conway.
Second by Conway, second by Ramos, Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock. Councilman Bullock. I'm hearing something, but we'll come back. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes, 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 yes.
And I'll go back up to Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Bear with us. I see some people are having some technical difficulties. So that this bill will move to second reader. So now, before we move to the next bill, we're gonna go back to accommodate our wonderful Councilman Stokes. You have to remember this. You owe us all one.
Yeah, we all do that. I don't owe nothing.
Okay, motion to reconsider vote from anyone for 21-0098. Anyone except Stokes. I need a motion to reconsider. So moved by Conway. Do I get a? Second by Glover, was that?
Yes.
Okay, Chair Middleton. Oh, it's just a A or a N? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, hearing none. Now we'll take the vote. Chair Middleton, yes. I mean, oh, I need a motion to move the bill. I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun.
So moved Conway.
So moved by Conway, second.
Second.
Second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Member Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Member Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Member Dorsey?
Yes.
Member Dorsey's a yes. Member Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And member Stokes?
Yes, and thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. This bill moves to second reader. Now we need a motion to reconsider the vote for 21-0111.
So moved Conway.
Second.
Okay. Uh, that's Conway and Ramos. And all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. None opposed. So now we need the motion to move the bill, 21-0111.
So moved Conway.
So moved by Conway, second.
Second.
By Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman, Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
This bill will move to second reader. And I think we, you're already on for Bill 21-0116. So now we'll move to the final bill, which is Bill number 21-0083, Franchise Gas Regulator Station Utility at Lower Gwyn Falls, Gwyn's Falls Parkway, for the purpose of granting a franchise to Baltimore Gas and Electric Company to construct, use, and maintain a gas regulator station utility subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on May 17th, 2021. The bill was sponsored by the Council President at the request of the administration, particularly Recreation and Parks. Councilmember Porter of the 10th District, would you like to comment about the bill?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman Middleton. So first, I want to thank the Council President for introducing on this bill on behalf of the administration, particularly Baltimore City Wreck and Parks. Just want to comment on the purpose of City Council Bill 21-003. It's squarely purposed for the need for Wilkins Avenue Bridge to be replaced, to be replaced, given its, given its infrastructure issues that have been long known. The Federal Highway Administration rates the bridge longer than 20 feet that carry vehicular traffic on a scale from zero to 100. Currently, that bridge rates at a 50, and it's eligible for federal funds. And so this relocation of the gas infrastructure is necessary to move this project forward. And it's my understanding that DOT and the relocation of the gas infrastructure will not be present or impact any residential communities in the Gwyn's Falls area. And we've, my office has gained support of the Gwyn's Falls Community Association in reference to this bill as well. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Wait, oh, sounds like, oh, you're, we lost you, Councilwoman. Are you?
No, no, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I said, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just want, no worries. I just wanted to to share the purpose of the bill. It, there's been a slight confusion with this particular bill, and I thank you for your guidance and the administration's guidance as we kind of really think through the complexity of this particular bill, but parse out these two different bills that were presented at the last committee hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, does anyone have any questions for the Councilwoman before we move on? Okay, moving on. We'll now hear from the agency reports, and we'll start with the city solicitor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Vic Trivola from the City Law Department. We're prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Transportation, Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, thank you so much. This is Liam Davis, Legislative Affairs Manager for Baltimore City DOT, also joined here today by Frank Murphy, Frank Murphy, our senior advisor at DOT, and the head of our Bridge Section, Scott Weaver. Similar to what the Councilwoman for the 10th District, Councilwoman Porter had stated, really DOT's main interest in this bill is that this new gas regulator and updating of the gas line, which is existing on the bridge and in the park, that is necessary for our bridge replacement project to go forward. The bridge that's currently there dates back to the 1930s, so it has served a long and useful tenure in DOT's bridge portfolio, but it is time for a brand new bridge to serve another 75-plus years. As the Councilwoman said, we did, we have worked with the communities to secure support, and we're also working with the community on some additional traffic calming efforts in the community based on some feedback we've gotten from them. Again, there is an existing gas regulator in the park that will be replaced. That is a good thing because you're updating the gas infrastructure, and a new gas line will be placed on the new bridge. This is really critical for anything from heating to, you know, cooking and, you know, supplying the various residents and businesses that kind of go down that Wilkins corridor. So with that being said, I'm open to any questions or comments. I want to be very clear that this is really limited to this kind of Wilkins Ave Bridge area in Lower Gwyn's Falls Park. It's not extending up into Councilman Torrance's district where there was a similarly aimed bill, completely different from what we're looking to advance today. Thank you.
Just one question. Is there added funding connected to this bill?
That's a great question, Madam Chair. So the urgency on DOT's side is this gas regulator bill is needed for BGE to advance their, to update their infrastructure, which is then gonna allow DOT to move forward with our bridge project. All of DOT's bridge projects are federally receive federal funding because for, uh, bridge projects in the United States are in 80-20 split. So federal government picks up 80% of the cost, which saves the city and city taxpayers a ton of money, and the remaining 20% is typically paid for by the locality. With federally funded projects, there is a 10-year timeline from kind of the initial starting of that planning and banking of money and community outreach. There's a 10-year window to advertise, and we have until August of 2022 to advertise the bridge project. If we don't advertise by then, it puts the federal funding in risk. And when you're talking bridge projects at an 80% funding formula, that's millions of dollars at risk if we don't move this legislation and have BGE move forward with their infrastructure upgrades. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Department of Transportation from the committee before we move to the next agency? Hearing none. Councilwoman Ramos, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Mr. Davis, the agreement that you're gonna have with BGE, I'm hoping will include, you know, communications with the community, a really good effort around the traffic mitigation when they're blocking the street, and any other communications, because we've been finding, even with planned work, those steps are not happening in some cases. The other thing is to make sure that they're putting in their equipment and infrastructure in a way that doesn't block the right of way for, and any people who are experiencing, who have disabilities. So can you help me with that and make sure that, I know that's not part of the bill, but it is something that we're asked, you know, we're agreeing to this agreement. So I'd like to make sure that those factors are in the agreement.
Sure. The detours for the bridge project and gas line work has been shared with the community. So there's a vehicular detour. There's also a trail detour within the park. And, you know, I'm aware of some of the issues you've shared, Councilwoman, and we'll be working to prepare as an agency for a hearing that that you announced yesterday's council meeting. So we look forward to having that conversation. But I know with this particular project, since our Bridge Section and Tech Division are working very closely and monitoring it very closely, I am very confident in in our abilities to adequately communicate to the community what is going to be happening, when the roads are going to be closed. And we've already made that connection on the community side with Councilwoman Porter's help to maintain that open dialogue. So we can get feedback from the residents when the detour needs to be adjusted a little. And actually, that was some of the feedback we got because they had recently experienced some detour challenges associated with Frederick Avenue Bridge replacement around 2016. So we take that as a learning opportunity. And again, it's all about trust, and I don't, I don't want us to lose trust with the council. I don't want us to lose trust with the community. So that's why I have Frank here. He's tag teaming some of these community efforts with me. And then we have Scott Weaver here, who's the head of Bridge Section. He is very well aware of the concerns of the council, and we will be making sure BGE is crossing their t's and dotting their i's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I look forward to our separate hearing on this. Thanks.
Is there, I just have one more question, Liam. Is, is, is the part of our regular capital improvement, is this part of our regular capital improvement program, or is it handled separately?
Yeah, this would be in CIP. So Planning Department manages annual CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. And that's kind of why these, you know, everyone's like, well, 10-year window, how are we bumping up against that? Well, there's the planning, and then there's the outreach, and then a lot of times it takes six to seven years to bank that local match. So this is, if we're approaching the 10-year window next year, this has probably been in our CIP, you know, going back to 2012, 2013, most likely. So it's, it's in the CIP. Is that correct, Scott? Can you clarify that? I think Scott is a panelist.
Scott is a panelist. Could you let him in? Hello, Scott? And Frank, can you hear? Scott?
Hey, Scott, you're gonna need to unmute. Do you know if this is in the CIP, a regular CIP project?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this has been in the CIP for some time now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Transportation?
I do have a question.
Um, Councilman Dorsey?
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just, I don't know if this was already covered. I'm just trying to get a hold on what we're actually talking about BGE constructing here. I, I travel all around the city, and I see lately, in particular, probably in the last, like, three to six months, a lot of places. probably in the last, like, three to six months, a lot of places around the city where, um, GE has spray painted on the asphalt in streets. It says, like, "No dig," uh, regulator facility, like, buried. It, like, like, this is the kind of thing that gets buried under the ground. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, so, uh, there's an existing regulator within Lower Gwyn's Falls Park, um, near the bridge. So this will include taking the old regulator offline, removing it, restoring it to park space, and then building a brand-new subsurface regulator nearby within Lower Gwyn's Falls Park. And then the new bridge will have, um, a new gas line on it. So there's an existing gas line on it, but the new bridge will have brand-new infrastructure.
So at the end of the day, we're talking about a thing that BGE wants to, that they have in the park already. They want to decommission and basically relocate to a new location in the park, and it will never be seen by human eyes because it's buried under the ground and covered over in a way that you wouldn't even know was there.
We can get you the official, um, our team has some designs that I think we have from BGE to show you what will be visible from the surface. I think the, the vast majority of it will be covered. There might be, like, a handbox and, you know, some, some small little elements that indicate there's something under there. But, like, even when I look at, uh, Google Earth as I was preparing for this bill, it's really not apparent to the naked eye looking at Google Earth or satellite imagery of the existing, um, gas regulator.
Yeah, this is a pretty, um, inobtrusive kind of thing, as far as I can tell. All right, thank you. I did also noted in the, in the bill file that, um, there's a letter from the, the Gwyn's Falls, uh, Community Association that says...
We're gonna, we're gonna have, um, Councilwoman Torrance is just going to clarify all that so we can have some clarity because there's a couple Gwyn Falls. Uh, Councilman Torrance, you want to, he's going to, uh, come back on.
Great, thanks.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I see that Councilwoman Porter has been elevated, but I do believe she secured support from the communities along the Gwyn's Falls Trail and at Gwyn's Falls Parkway.
Thank you.
And we do, we do have record of that in our files. Um, any other, okay, you're finished, Councilman Torrance? Okay, let's move on to the Office of the Comptroller. Casey, are you here?
Madam Chair, um, Casey needed, I think she might need to be elevated. She let us know that she was having trouble getting in. So I just wanted to note that for her.
She's not on.
She was.
She was at the beginning, but she's not on now. So we'll, um, move on and maybe she'll surface back. Um, the Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair and committee members. This is Brett Thorne with the Parking Authority. We have reviewed the proposed legislation, and we do not oppose passage of the bill.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committees. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. Department of Planning. Is Department of Planning still on with us?
Madam Chair, this is Nina Dumas with the Mayor's Office. Um, it looks like Matt DeSantis is, um, is no longer a part of the hearing, but the, um, department would stand by its report with no objection to the legislation.
Thank you. We do have a favorable report. Uh, the Fire Department, did you get this one?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. There, Brett Thorne. Yes, we did get this one. We stand by our report, which is no objections.
Thank you. Okay, and I don't see Casey on, but they, I do have, um, record that it has no objection. Is that correct, Nina?
Yes, Madam Chair. They do stand by the report with no objections.
Okay, and, um, just want to make note that this bill will be sent to the Board of Estimates after this hearing. Goes to the Board of Estimates. Uh, we will now take public testimony, and we're checking to see if there's any hands raised. And we don't see any, but we, I think there is a caller. Hello?
Hello, ma'am?
Yes, hello?
Yes, I have a question.
Um, identify yourself, please.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure if you can even hear me, but my name is...
Everyone can hear you.
Okay, my name is Carolyn Carey, and I'm with the Parkway Community Association. And I was, uh, aware of these two bills, and one being in the Hamlin area and the other in the area of Duke Land Street. So I, you know, I've always known that the regulator is located under the old Wilkins Street Bridge. That's where it is. And so it suggested so that DOT can work on the bridge, to build a new bridge, to move it elsewhere. And I was under the impression that that would be Duke Land Street, and I need that clarification. Where is Lower, uh, Gwyn's Fall exactly? Or is it Duke Land Street?
I don't think it's Duke Land Street, but Liam...
No, ma'am.
Liam, did you want to clarify quickly?
Yeah, I got a map up, so let me just see. Uh, so...
Madam Chair, I can, this is Scott Weaver with the Department of Transportation.
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the new location for the gas regulator will be approximately 50 to 100 feet north of this existing location. It'll be within the park but outside of the actual bridge footprint. So it won't be on Duke Land Street. It'll be in a, in a grassy area just north of the, uh, of the exist- of the, uh, Wilkins Avenue itself and just north of the bridge.
That's what we want to hear, so it's not on Duke Land.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Scott.
Okay, so you're saying 150 feet. Where is that? You have to help us out a little bit. You do this all the time. Okay, so 150 feet.
Ma- ma'am, excuse me, um, I, I'd like you to do testimony. You, you know, you can't question. So you, you did, I allowed, uh, I allowed, uh, answer to your first question, but this opening is for you to give testimony. If you want your testimony to be your concern, that's fine. But you're given, you know, a few minutes to give a, a testimony, not ask questions to... Hello? Are you still there?
Yes, I heard.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Did you want to make, let's just hear your comment, please.
Okay, I just needed that clarification, and I'm trying to understand it. And you said it's not Gwyn- it's not Duke Land. Okay. Um, so then I have to just accept what you're saying because, uh, from my information early on, it was two communities where this regulator was going to be placed. And that's what I needed to clarify, clarification on. I know about Hamlin, and I was trying to find out what is the other community?
So my suggestion, um, an added suggestion would, would be for you to contact, um, the Department of Transportation and also your councilperson, and they will continue to clarify that for you.
Okay, thank you, madam.
Yeah, and, um, my, uh, I guess I can leave my email address in the chat.
That, okay.
And if, if she would like, if the constituency would like to contact me, we can, um, I can share the plat. There's a plat that shows exactly where the new regulator is going to go.
Okay, and then also your, the councilperson can connect you with Liam Davis of Transportation, and they'll gladly, um, give you more information. And, and that, I think that person, and he's on, that's Councilman Torrance. And he's with me. He's shaking his head. Yes, he'll make that connection.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, let's move on to the next. Caller six, are you there?
Would that be 4158?
Yes, that, you're on.
All right, good. Thank you so much, um, Councilman Middleton. Um, just piggybacking on what the young lady Carolyn Carey, I think you cleared it up. We were concerned when, um, the dear Councilwoman Porter said that she had met with the communities on Gwyn's Falls. We were confused, Councilwoman. We thought you were referring to Gwyn's Falls Parkway. And as our councilperson, uh, told us, you're referring to the Gwyn- Gwyn's Falls Trail. Is that, that is my understanding. And the gentleman just pointed out that it's not on Duke Land. I will look over his map because that's the confusion. We were not, um, on Gwyn's Falls, those organizations from Garrison all the way down to Arkentrally Terrace had not been met with concerning OOA3. But we're depending on our dear Congress and tourists to, to somewhat clear this matter up. That's what we were concerned about. But I think you all have answered it, and we will look at the map. And young man, is it a possibility that that map, because it doesn't show up too well on the computer, is there another way in which that can be sent to me or in our community where we can actually see it a little quicker? Or can that be given to Councilman Torrance to give to the community?
Councilman Torrance can connect you with, um, Liam Davis of Transportation, and they will gladly, um, share with you any further questions you have.
Yeah, and I mean, we...
Thank you so much.
We can totally share it, and I just want to be clear, like, the, this is for Wilkin, 21-0083 is really with, it's a, within, as, as Scott said, within maybe a couple hundred feet of Wilkins Avenue, uh, Bridge.
Okay.
And I know that, that's, that's a, uh, completely different council district from Hamlin Park.
Very good. Or Hamlin or Panway. We're all connected up and down Gwyn's Falls Parkway. And, um, so I think I understand, and we'll get with Councilman Torrance. We just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to impede upon Gwyn's Falls Parkway neighborhood associations, which is eight or 10 of us, from Garrison all the way down to Arkentrally Terrace.
Madam Chair, this is Frank Murphy.
And I think you've cleared that up.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much.
And, um, I think Frank Murphy from Transportation also wanted to make a comment.
Yes, Madam Chair, just to clarify for the, the young lady we just heard from, what's confusing is the neighborhood off Wilkins Avenue is called the Gwyn's Falls Association. And they're not anywhere close to the, uh, Panway area, which is up by Gwyn's Falls Parkway. But they both run by the Gwyn's Falls Stream, and that's the common thread in the names. So, yeah, this is not in the area of, of Gwyn's Falls Parkway.
Correct. Thank, thank you, um, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Frank.
And moving on to the next, the last person, William Herman, I think it is?
No comment on this particular matter. Uh, Madam Chairwoman, uh, one question is, will there be, uh, time for public comment at the end of the meeting on, uh, the proceedings of the committee?
The proceedings of the committee?
Specifically in regards, I, well, I wanted to thank the committee for postponing the discussion of 21-0087.
Okay, we'll hold, we'll hold off on that for, for a minute.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. I think that was the last one. Is that correct? Okay, is there a motion to move the bill? From the committee?
It moved.
Second.
So, so moved by Ramos. I think it was second by, was that Stokes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Chair Middleton, there are no amendments. So Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is it yes? Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, and Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
And as I mentioned ear- earlier, this bill will be sent to the Board of Estimates after this hearing. And, um, before we adjourn, let's go back to the last caller that wanted to say something on, um, another, wanted to make a statement?
Hi, uh, esteemed members of the committee and, um, Madam Chairwoman, thank you for recognizing me. My name is William Herman. I'm speaking on my own behalf as a member of, uh, or as a Baltimore City resident and as a business owner, uh, in Baltimore City. 21-0087, uh, in my opinion, is a particularly insidious piece of legislation. I have reached out over the past two weeks to Councilman Stokes' office as he represents, um, my business district. Um, and it's good to see him here at this hearing. I was honestly concerned for his well-being because I had not heard anything from his office, despite calling just about every day. Um, and this piece of legislation, you know, um, is proposing a really dramatic change in zoning from OR2 to C1, which is like one of the most residential zonings to like one of the most commercial in an area that, um, that is residential, uh, specifically in, uh, the center of the city, in Old Goucher.
Sir?
Yes?
Um, that bill is going to be rescheduled, and...
Okay, so I, I would just request one thing.
Save your testimony for when we actually have the bill hearing.
I will do that. I would just request that the utmost, um, consideration be given and perhaps, like, um, making the notices posted 45 days in advance as opposed to at least 30 because of the nature of the bill.
We follow the law. So at this point, save your testimony for the next hearing on this particular bill. And, um, on that note, thank you again for, um, sharing your concern with us. And this hearing is adjourned.